So, road and bridge and motor fuel tax money has always been used for streets. Something street-related, it has to be. And the Department of Transportation has approved it.
So, they've approved us covering personnel?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it's easier to get that approved than it is for Gary Home to document the portion of the street that we used motor fuel tax money for. It's very difficult, I mean, it's a paperwork nightmare. That's why they've only audited Wooddale up through 2004. And when they came out about six months ago, they were starting from the year 2000. That's how far behind they are. It's just an incredible amount of work. So, much simpler for the city of Wooddale to submit paperwork on the payroll. That's easy for them to read and understand. Roadway projects know that's very complicated.
Well, then what's the class of the personnel that we're trying to cover with the 230?
Two-hundred-and-thirty.
So, exactly two-hundred-and-thirty for?
Oh, you mean, is it a round number? No, I'm sure it's been rounded up a little bit. I guess Mr. Home can tell us how many people that is.
We actually took the total salaries in streets. The total, grand total of salaries in streets. And then a percentage of that, they actually spend working on street or MFT-eligible items. My streets guys are not day-to-day, always working on an MFT-eligible item.
Right.
So, you had to assume a percentage of the time that they're working on MFT-eligible items, and a reasonable percentage. So, that is where the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand came from, is the grand total. A reasonable percentage of that equaled two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Yeah, so I had roughly around seventy percent of the time that they were working on MFT-eligible items. Thirty percent of the time, they're working on other items. And another item would be a special event, maybe. That's a good example. Setting up for the Jubilee is not MFT-eligible. Doing pothole patching is MFT-eligible. So, you know, generally speaking, my streets guys are working on streets-related items the majority of the time.
And then, are we going to use them doing different things in the following years since we go down to one-hundred-and-fifty?
No, we would just, we would just fund less of them with MFT. They'll still be doing the streets-related work, it's just that they'll be funded more out of general fund and less out of MFT.
Then I'm going to argue we should be consistent. So, if it's one-fifty as a number, then I would do one-fifty this year, one-fifty next year, and so forth.
Mr. Knite, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I was looking at the snow ice control.
Uh-huh.
I see where...
Went down.
We actually increased it, but from the projected, we dropped it down. Things run sick this week, and I think we're going into a ten-year cycle of more severe winters. Weekend got longer way here in the last two or ten years. I don't know, maybe...
Fifty?
I'd like to see fifty-five. Do I return into that?
And you know what? I kind of agree with you on that too, because we never know. You know what? This is like trying budget for fuel. You never know. I mean, I'd rather be more heavy than come back again. So, right. So, Maggie, is everyone in favor of changing that number from forty-five up to fifty-five? Okay. Is there anyone against it? Swinger?
So, does that mean we're planning on buying more salt? Where would we put the salt that in previous years? I mean, this isn't a nominally situation, right? Where we just have a lot of snow.
I think it's only, in this case, that we, last week, we spent, I would say, almost twenty-five minutes arguing about, do we buy the ten thousand dollars, or whatever we approve for salt? The thing is, no one says he's, he ain't going, I don't think he'll spend. It's just like a budget. If you give him the money, it doesn't mean that he's going to spend fifty-five thousand dollars' worth of salt. It's just his backup. The problem is, you also have to look at, if I am mistaken, yeah, so, I mean, I just don't see, I mean, no, it's just like any budget. You put it in there, that don't mean they'll spend it all.
Okay, then...
I mean, I mean, let's face it, I mean, we spent twenty minutes on salt debate the other week. I don't care whatever the council agrees to do it. Like I said, this is a whole council's budget, and, you know, that's why we're doing this. So, which way you guys want to go? I, Gary, what do you think?
Yeah.
Well, what we'll do is, like we have done in the past years, we'll establish an emergency bin, we'll fill our primary bin. If we have no snow, then we're not going to purchase anymore, because we don't have any place to put it. So, as we go through the season, if we continue to use it, and use it, and use it, and, then it becomes, as Alderman Knite said, then it becomes just an extra insurance policy that we'll have more money to be able to utilize. But we're not going to just spend it to spend it, because I have no place to put it.
Right. Mr. Newzio, do you have a question?
That's what I was going to say. If we have, all I was going to say is, if we have no place to put it, I don't care if we make this a hundred thousand, if you've got no place to put it, you're not going to buy a hundred thousand dollars' worth of salt.
Is there senses to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Up that salt? Okay. Christine, we'll go back to your question, since there was a lot of concerns on that, about what you guys want to do with what Christine brought up about using the money for, you know, go ahead.
I've got a question for you, Maggie. If we drop that down and stay consistent to a hundred-and-fifty thousand, what is that going to do to the general fund? I mean, if I remember right, we were pretty close to being even...
We were like twelve, we were twelve to the good, now you'll be going the other way, you'll be sixty, sixty-eight to the bed.
So, we're going to pass a negative budget, then?
Well, that's been done before, and that's not illegal.
I understand, but...
There's sufficient fund balance. Let me just make a point about how we budget here. Maybe this will help clear things up. We don't paint the worst case or the best case. What each department is asked to do by the manager is to submit a budget where they can provide all of the services they are currently providing, and any additional ones the council has enumerated throughout the year, okay? So, if there's been a new initiative like clean air counts, we have to put that in. If decisions have been made about commissioning a particular study, we put those things in. So, yes, you can change the snow and ice control line from forty-five to fifty-five. It doesn't change anything, except a piece of paper. If we need sixty-five for snow and ice control, that will come back to this council for action, okay? And if thirty thousand is spent, you'll just have twenty-five thousand dollars that isn't spent from the fifty-five. That's all it is. It's, we're talking about on paper. So, having said that, the reason why we go through these PowerPoints and try to highlight for you is to focus you on the decision points that have to do with policy. Alderman Winger just made a point about she's not comfortable covering some of the street department salaries with motor fuel tax money. Alderman Shocky made the same point. And that is a policy decision. If the alternative is to have a deficit in the general fund and preserve the motor fuel tax monies for something else, that's a perfectly appropriate decision for the council to make. That's not a problem, and the staff will change things accordingly here. But what it's also telling you is that it is becoming increasingly hard to afford the services that the general fund is providing, based on the revenues the city can currently collect, okay? In a nutshell, that's what we're dealing with. And it's been that way for several years. Now, there are a few new revenue sources coming online, but they're going to take time, like the red light camera enforcement. We had a personal discussion at the last meeting about these business licenses, and Alderman Lewitton and I were just speaking about that. It needs a great deal of study before we can get it on track again and see how much money it can yield for the city. And the non-home rule sales tax is off-limits to the general fund. It's capital money, has to go in capital projects. So, this is what we're struggling with. We've got three unions, and all of them have fairly substantial increases plus stipends. Those are all reflected in this budget. If you want to know where we can change, the only line items we can really change here are some commodity line items. Hopefully, we find a better deal to buy something, like copy paper. But the salaries come in pretty much exactly the way they're laid out here. Unless you get rid of a whole person, you're not going to reduce the salaries. They're already fixed by contract. The payroll taxes, the IRS tells us what the percentage is. We have nothing to say about that. So, there's no, I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, there's no discretion used on the personnel whatsoever, except how many people the city has as employees. There is certainly some discretion used as to whether we replace a vehicle this year or a subsequent year. There is some discretion used as to what vendor we use to provide gasoline. But most of it is pretty cut and dried, and when these budgets come to you, they are, how do, this is what it's going to take, we feel, to operate for the next twelve months, providing a level of services council has directed. That's what you have here.
Anyone, anyone have anything on that? I mean, Christine brought a valid point. I mean, guys, if you want to eliminate that, that's fine. It's up to council here. We've got to make a decision, leave it there or not? There's a concern? Does anyone else have a concern with that? Okay, Mr. Catalis, I see you've got a little concern. Okay. So, all right, well, then, let's bring them out on the table here, and let's get it done here, and instead of everyone saying a little concerned, and then let's make a decision here. I mean, if you got a concern, let's hear it. And everyone else?
I got that. Mr. Newzio? So, Maggie, if we just drop this down to one-fifty, I mean, when we go back to the general fund, then we can decide how we're going to balance that budget at that time.
If that's council's intention, yes, because you'd be at approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars deficit if you dropped this from two-thirty to one-fifty.
Right. So, then, one way or the other, we're going to have to decide, where do we want the money? Balance general fund or less cash here?
I'm sorry.
Either way, we're going to have to decide. Either this fund is going to go down to, what is that? Going to go down to what? Ending balance will be fifty-four thousand?
Right. So, if you drop it down by eighty, then you're going to have a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, approximately.
Yeah, this would be a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, if we add the eighty back in, and then the other one will be...
Right.
We're just playing with numbers.
Well, it, we're not, we're not trying, we're doing this as transparently as we know how. We're not making fund transfers to cover a problem or hide a mistake. It's, we're giving you the alternatives that you have to decide, because these funds can be used for streets and street-related personnel expenses. So, this is an, this is an alternative or an option. Doesn't have to be this way. And the entire street department salaries can be taken out of the general fund, and they will make a deficit.
Yeah. Bottom line is, we need to make more money if we're going to continue to give the services we give, that's all.
Or we start cutting some services. I mean, we could do that. We could cut some services, too. I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, then we'll cut the services, too. Mr. Coles?
I would suggest we leave it the way it is, the two-thirty, to put it in the general fund, because it's part of the salaries of the people that work on the street. Now, you're saying, how many work on the street? Well, he might have a crew go out for half a day, and so, how can he charge, how can he, that just goes, this only goes against a man's salary. So, it doesn't make any difference where this fund is, but it's, you've gone over this general fund right now, haven't you, last week? I wasn't here. You went over the general fund. You okayed that. So, why do you want to change it now? Why do you want to change it? This was, this was put into the general fund and supposed to stay there. And also, on the salt, I mean, he's got snow and ice control. He don't know how it's going to be next year. And so, if you want to add ten thousand dollars, let's add ten thousand dollars. If you don't want to, leave it the way it is. She's gone through this. You're just making changes just because you want changes. I, I mean, let's leave it the way he's, she's fixed it up. That's what her job is. Why waste their time?
Sorry.
Right? Right. I agree with it.
I'm just...
Why waste their time?
As far as input for staff, I mean, what, what exactly is the concern behind not transferring the two-thirty if we maintain a positive fund balance there? What is the concern for those of you who are concerned?
Mr. Catalis? This is my first time around, so forgive me if it seems naive, but, yeah, we are maintaining a positive fund balance, but it's lower than it's ever been, and the year after projects to possibly be even lower, without any solid way of, in my mind, of how we're going to bring any more revenue into the city. You know, that could continue to get lower to the point where it's not anymore. I mean, it goes back to what Alderman Shocky said two weeks ago. If we make this transfer, it might be a forever thing, which is okay, but how long before we run the risk of maybe not being, you know, ending up with a positive balance at the end? That's my fear. I don't know how to fix it, so I feel bad even bringing it up right now, but I, that's what I'm afraid of. That's my concern.
Well, if you look at the three-year projection, it goes up higher on the third year than it is for projected 2008, if you follow the projected numbers as proposed. It's one-fourty-six, five-seven-four. This year's projected one-three-one, five-eight-eight.
It really is a philosophy question, or a policy question, whether or not the general fund deficits that are sure to recur in the absence of any new revenue sources are going to be defrayed in part or in whole with funds from some other fund. That's really what we're talking about here.
Okay, does I, I guess, Mr. Catalis?
Then it's a leap of faith, and we trust the professionals that, you know, we're going to be okay. I mean, I don't know, I don't know enough, like I say, to either, to either change it, recommend an alternative, or to argue it, so...
I mean...
It's like, I'll go back to and say, keep it where it is.
Christine?
At a very minimum, I suggest the one-fifty. I couldn't sit there and explain this to anyone on why we said two-thirty one year to cover salaries, one-fifty the next, one-fifty the next. Let's at least be consistent and make it the one-fifty.
My concern here, then, then, if you're going to do that, then we better go back in there and start cutting some services then, because, or the train station goes down. I mean, let's face it, guys, there ain't revenue coming in. You know, we try and offset this budget in some way with salaries, yeah, they got, you know, I just think it was the best way to do it. Maybe I was wrong, maybe we were, I just think it's the best way to do it, but then you're going to have to start cutting some services or cut some programs out here, because you know what? We haven't even finished other issues here. This deficit could go further. I mean, I thought the goal here was try to bring a budget to order, on a, a balanced budget, but obviously, now we're going backwards. But I, if the consensus with council is to go to one-fifty, then we'll go one-fifty. But if the consensus not, then, I mean, Ed, did you have a question?
No, as I say, if we don't take it out of here, then we go to capital, and instead of streets, one-point-three million, let's go to one million. So, we transfer from there. So, you know, do you want to take something visual that people see actually their streets being repaired? Or how many people look at the motor fuel fund to say, hey, you transferred out of there? You know? So, where are we going to cut services, or, you know?
Mr. Newzio?
Yeah, they, I think the finance department worked it out. I think, you know, they're doing an excellent job. Let it be. I mean, they're our advisors, and I think we need to put our faith in them and say, yeah, that's the way to go.
The way this process worked was, after the departments submitted their budgets, we put it together into the general fund, we met with Chairman Wesley, and got more direction as to what had to take place. So, each of the departments went back, and in fact, the finance role in this, we did prepare the finance department budget, but the rest of it was just crunching numbers. We didn't have any input into how many people there were, you know, in a particular department or division. That's all left to the department heads. Each department is responsible for, what does it take to render your services, and, you know, put it on paper? Not worst case, not best case, what's reasonable. So, that's how this was done. But as I say, there isn't any rule that says you can't pass a budget with a deficit. That was done a couple of years ago in the general fund, and we turned it around. We got some auction money, we had some miscellaneous revenue that no one knew about, and it didn't turn out to be a deficit. So, it's not, it certainly is a possibility, or something that is allowable, and there is sufficient general fund balance. But at the same time, I think council members are aware that without new revenue sources, the burden is pretty terrific, just when you take personnel expenses. And then we've got the uncontrollables, like gasoline, which are going to keep going up despite anybody's efforts. I mean, that's not, that's not controllable by the city.
Basically, as a council, our goal is to move the city forward. You know, moving one fund to the other fund, cut the train station. If we cut the train station, earlier was said, you know, we're looking to put in the train stations, our building block for our new downtown area. If we start cutting the train station, so much for our building block, our building's crumbling. Whether it's this fund or the other fund, I think we're in the same spot. We're going to cut a hundred thousand off the roads, and we do less road surfacing this year. Let's get the roads done. Let's take care of this. Let's, let's see where we'll end up. If the train station goes up, we might get some interest, get some more businesses in town, revenues start going up. This two-thirty that you show one-fifty next year, if we start developing some businesses, the one-fifty could become a hundred thousand. If it becomes two-thirty again next year, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'll have a problem with it myself, because I feel then we're not doing our job and getting the city on the right foot.
Lisa, I think one thing maybe that we haven't done, because of course, we haven't gotten through all these funds yet, is to maybe paint the wide picture of what this budget is. I think this is a budget that preserves every single level of service currently rendered, and adds some services, like additional sidewalks and additional forestry and things like that. I think it enables the council to be able to build a train station, which is vital, is the cornerstone of economic development. I think this budget allows the city to continue on with its vehicle replacement program, because that's very important, that's key. This budget allows us to save money for some vital radios that the police department is going to need in two years. We haven't even finished all those highlights yet. Rather than think of this as some loser budget, I think maybe you want to look at this as a budget that accomplishes a great deal. We have a roadway program that's going to also be able to have seven-hundred thousand dollars of water and sewer mains. We haven't even finished those budgets yet, but I think this budget is maximizing what the city can do with its resources. I really do. And I see the philosophical difference here with transferring for motor fuel tax, but all of these are resources of the city, and their goal should be to provide that service for the community. And I think that's what these budgets do.
I think we need to take a roll call on this one. Who's in favor of moving two-hundred-and-thirty thousand out of this account? Do that a roll call, please.
Roll call for that?
Oh, I'll make the motion not to remove the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Not to move it?
Not to remove it.
Not to remove it?
Leave it as is. I'm sorry.
So, positively, you're saying...
Approved the budget as presented, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Now, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Curious? Good.
Talk about accomplishing a lot with a fund. The tourism fund collects most of its money from the hotel motel tax. That's a five percent tax that is imposed, and it yields about three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars a year. The tourism monies, the hotel motel tax is supposed to be spent for the promotion of tourism.
No, no.
This fund pays the general fund fifty thousand dollars every year for administration. And this current budget has sixty-three thousand dollars of special events, eighty-five thousand dollars of landscape improvements, it has a hundred thousand dollars of ornamental lighting, twenty-seven thousand of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, an increased budget for seasonal decorations that hopefully will be more permanent-type decorations, an increase of one thousand dollars to six thousand for the Historical Society, and then, based on the last committee meeting, the dial-a-ride driver expenses, which is about forty-two thousand dollars, it's the driver salaries, payroll taxes, and pension, are coming out of this particular budget that you're looking at. I think probably each of these are worthy of discussion, because they're all higher than they've been in prior years, and so I guess we'll just go through with questions.
All right. Mr. Newzio?
All right, I'd like to start with special events. I seem to get the feeling that everybody would like a three-day event with the carnival, which will incur extra costs as far as city services, police, and whatnot. I mean, I believe last year was sixty-three thousand...
No, last year was seventy.
Maggie, last year, in the sixty-three-five that special events received, wasn't, didn't that also include Historical Society in there?
No. They've always been on their own line item.
I was under the impression it was sixty-three-five last year.
It was. It's sixty-three this year.
Or just seventy next year. I'm sorry. You're right.
I'd like to know what the consensus is on the council as far as a three-day event. Basically, we want to bring in the carnival and try and generate some revenue and get some of this money back. Before we go any further, in Special Events Committee, what does council want to do on this?
I think the consensus of the budget of sixty-three thousand, I mean, it's a budget item. If you want to run a three-day event, go ahead, but, I mean, you have a budget of sixty-three thousand.
Three very short...
fire. I'm sure all these guys get paid. It's all an extra fee. And I think we had like 4,000 or 5,000 left over after everything was done. Are we going to be able to cover that?
Five and a half, but it'll work.
Right. I mean, I can't guarantee the carnival's going to be a big hit and make big money. They're projecting, they gave us a quick estimate, possibly make about 8,000 dollars. But, you know, depending where we have it, if Park District's involved, there might be some revenue sharing there. Do we have any kind of direction? I mean, are we going to share revenue with the Park District on some of this stuff? If we're, we might be using the ball field or something.
Well, I.
At special events, I mean, I cannot make the decision on my own and say, hey, okay, you know, you guys provide some of the workers and we'll split the money with you. I need some kind of direction.
I understand your direction, but I think that needs to be brought up down the line. Right now, we're trying to figure out if that budget is enough for you, for the special events in the committee. I agree that needs to be addressed down the line, but I don't think now would be the time to bring that up because the thing is, we're doing with the budget right now. Cost sharing, we don't know if we would all approve that. Right now, we're trying, I mean, we just want to make sure there's enough money in the special event. I think that was, am I right? Jeff? Is that the way we're going?
Well, I think to figure out what we're going to have to budget for, I mean, the three-day event would have to be, have to be brought up though. So if we pass the budget without incorporating the money needed for the three-day event, then there's automatically not going to be a three-day event.
But I believe the special events submitted this budget with a three-day, predicted for a three-day event. Am I correct?
Basically, the carnival's no cost to the city. They bring their own electric. The insurance will have to become additional insured and whatnot. And they would pay us so much for the games, I mean, a flat fee for the games, and then there's a revenue share as far as the rides go and if they have a food cart with caramel corn, you know, and that kind of stuff.
Mr. Coles? I don't see anything in this budget that says three-day carnival in here. All I see is community events, 63,000 dollars. And the way it's divided up, that's up to whoever's running the community events. Why, why, why are we getting involved?
Actually, the original proposed number, if you look in, on the worksheet, it says new events and enhancement of current events, and it says zero right now.
Right.
I believe that should be, it should say eight, and the eight would incorporate the three-day carnival. Yeah. And we, we took that out in our budget discussions.
Right, because.
We weren't sure if there was a consensus for the three-day carnival.
Right. The question, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Nintio, I think it'd be helpful, what are you asking for? Are you looking for like 75,000? Because this particular fund, you can spend down to zero every year, and that just reduces your ending cash balance to 59,030. But I think you need to throw a figure out there, what you're looking for, for the three-day event, for your committee.
The figure was 63 plus eight, 8,000, so it was 71.
I'm not looking for more money for this. What I'm trying to do is, by bringing in the carnival, bring in some revenue instead of just paying out and bring down our cost. I don't want more money, I want to bring it down less. I mean, and even like the historical society, we're going to give them an extra thousand this year, why can't we just leave them at 5,000 this year because, you know, we're trying to balance the budget? And if the carnival becomes a success and we're making the extra money, well, that's not a problem giving them the extra thousand.
Don't forget, if you add the third day though, you're going to incur extra costs with police presence and all that.
When we started this process, I went to Mr. Holmes, I went to the Chief Benowitz, and said, listen, when you guys do your budgets, need to figure that we're going to do a three-day event. I would, I'm hoping that everybody did that because we're proceeding forward with the three-day event if we get the carnival locked down. And basically, I believe the meeting's going to be next week, and we really need to make a decision on doing a three-day event or not because you have to start preparing flyers and bands and all that other stuff.
I think that the three-day event was proposed as, as.
No, the enhanced event you're talking about, the 8,000 dollars was to put electric at the Eliopoulos property. Well, I put the kibosh on that. Reason being, a couple of things. Number one, the carnival says, hey, you know what, there's not enough room here, we're going to move it to the ball fields to put a carnival. So why spend 8,000 dollars at the ball fields and then we're not going to use the facility? First, we should see how the carnival's going to work.
So this is not really a budgetary item then if you don't need the extra 8,000? It's 63 as it stands, so this is just a policy decision on if the council wants a three-day carnival or not.
Okay, so.
So I don't know if we.
Well, we're discussing the budget, I wasn't sure if this is a spot we're, because I have no direction on, on anything as far as the carnival.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Maybe I can give you a little help on that. In the past, which we haven't always done, we haven't done for years, as a matter of fact, special events committee comes to the council and presents your program that you want to do for the year under mayor's report, and then the council gives you guidance, approves it or doesn't approve it. So at some future date, you should present to the city council what your plans are for the year.
Mr. Mike?
Your three-day event, this carnival thing, is that going to be it for the year? So then you're saying like no community day, no tree lighting thing? Because everything's going to be wrapped up in this carnival?
No. The tree lighting, we still want to do the tree lighting and all the other events. Basically, we're trying to get the carnival and, I mean, we're putting in the third day, I know that overtime and whatnot is going on, but I got the feeling and the census from some of the members that they'd like to have a carnival, they'd like to make it a three-day event, you know, Wooddale Summer Fest or holiday, community days, whatever you want to call it. But nobody's given any real direction on where we go. And the bottom line is, bring in the carnival, you're trying to bring in revenue, which is 63,000, you know, maybe we get it down to 50 or 45,000. So we're not pulling out 60,000 every year, we're trying to pull out 45.
Jeff?
I think what would be prudent is if we just bring this up at a future committee. If you're happy with the budgeted amount, which you seem to be, you know, we'll stick to the budget tonight and we'll talk about, put this on an item, you know, in two weeks.
Mr. Cadalas, you have a question? I see your hand up. Okay. Ms. Winger?
Couple of questions. Okay, the line item, middle of the page, 09411841. Now, I'm noticing the proposed, there's no 75K there, but the footnote said that we were going to commit to do it through 0809.
What are you?
So, so do we need to put 75 there?
Yes, that's, that's the error. I haven't gotten to that slide yet.
Okay.
But that's the error that I made. I have it, I have it coming into capital projects, I didn't take it out of tourism. Now, if we put that in, it's going to throw this, it's going to wipe out this fund balance entirely.
That's what you're talking about, where there's nothing.
Right, there's not, so it'll go negative at that point. So, so we'll need to do a little fixing here in order to make that happen, or I could change the amount of the 75,000. I have some recollection of this, but wasn't this paying back the capital projects fund?
For like the bridges?
For monies that were used either for the pedestrian path or stream bank stabilization, something like that? That, that's my, I mean, it was before my time, but it was whenever this fund could afford it, it was supposed to pay back 75,000. So I guess we could make it 50 this year and finish it off in 2010, the last 25, and then be done with it. That way, this fund would still have a fund balance.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with you, but I'm going to ask you one other question, which might be tied to a possible solution, that, that column, Alderman Cadella and I were looking at this, that, where the question marks are, the ornamental street lighting, is it possible that that 100,000 that probably won't be spent in 0708, isn't carried over into the fund balance for the next year?
Well, if it was, if it was spent in 0708, then that would change all these fund balances again, but the net effect would be the same. It's just in what year that the fund balance goes negative.
So does your proposed 2009 column include 100,000 that did not get spent?
Yes, no, it includes 100,000 for ornamental lighting. That's one of the next items we need to talk about after street scape.
But we need it through special events first.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one more on special events then.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just looking at the salaries, and it like really looks like it's skyrocketing. Just looking at all the different salaries and, okay, salaries, I can see 40101, that's okay, it actually went down there. But then, how about the part-time employment?
That's all the drivers.
49,000, what?
That's the dialeride drivers. We were directed to do that at the last meeting.
To put it in here, it was based on the approval of being able to do it or whatnot.
With the hotels.
And then we did get the detail, a copy of what was already sent to us, and, you know, perhaps we look, I guess I have two questions then. So is our proposal that we're going to advertise on the van? Is that what we're going to do with this?
Yeah, we talked to the, both hotels, and they've agreed to work with the city and put advertisements for the hotels on the van, so that would allow us to then use the tourism fund to fund part of the dialeride program.
And then, and then also, I thought we could also look at the cost of it. It's a good program, I'm not looking to get rid of it, but maybe there are some efficiencies that we still need to pick up if it's, you know, costing us 49,000, whatnot.
That's why I incorporated that memo into your packets. If we want to bring that issue back up, we can bring it back up, but for this budget right now, that was the direction we received, to talk to the hotels and then put it in the tourism account and go from there.
Uh huh. I know I've asked this before, and I can't get it through my head, do we, I know we reduced hours, and I'm thinking that reduces ridership. So if we expand hours, and I have gotten a complaint from residents, that we reduce hours to the point where it doesn't necessarily work for them. So if we expand again, I imagine we could increase ridership. I know we would increase our hours, but then there's a scheduling thing too there, right? Like we know ahead of time what's, you know, scheduled and that sort of thing. So maybe we do look at increasing the ridership, I mean, the hours.
If we were to increase the hours, the, it would actually be more of a cost to the city than if we did that, if we increased the hours.
But, but the riders would go up.
Yeah, remember, every ride we do, we are actually losing more money. I mean, so by gaining ridership doesn't mean we're gaining revenue. I mean, we are gaining revenue, but we're actually gaining more costs than we are revenue.
But wouldn't the personnel cost that increased go up in 0607 as well? Or is it only 0708?
How do you, how do you mean, Alderman Winger?
Well, 0607, the Casper trip was still somewhat in, in the ballpark, but then it like almost doubled in 0708.
There was, the, the large increase in the cost of the program was predicated on the new union salaries that were negotiated in the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Special event was good, I think. Landscape improvement. I did talk to the street scape chairman, and in the budget, he had 85,000, okay? And I did talk to him, and I believe Mr. Cadalas agreed to take 20,000 dollars out of that budget. Am I correct or no?
I thought we started at like 105,000 and went down to 85. It's getting late, it's getting late, my memory's getting bad, so let me look at this. You're, no, yeah.
No. He had 110 at, then this year, he had 65. The next, next year, you're up to 85.
No, I didn't up anything, I took 20,000 off, 25, actually. Our, our projected was 110, or I should say, our proposed is 110, it's looking like we're going to be more like 65 this year. So we went back and revisited the 110 and brought it down to 85. So we knocked 25,000 off. And that's what that 85 reflects. No, yes?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I stand corrected then, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. And then the, the lighting, what you guys want to do with that? We didn't do anything last year. My suggestion, and I'm just throwing this out to you, you take that 100,000 dollars this year, since we aren't going to, I don't think we'll do them, and if we're going to do the train station, we take that 100,000 dollars and put it towards the platform lighting if we have to go that route. But that's a council decision, it was only my suggestion out there. Mr. Cadalas?
As the chairman of street scape, where these ornamental streetlights, I don't know if they originated, but they definitely ended up there, you know, you definitely have my buy-in on that, to not do them this year and to put that money towards platform lighting. So obviously, you're right, the council needs to vote on it, but I'm, I'm fine with that.
I would say, show me the train station built and then I'll look at lights. You know, I want to see it on the streets. Thank you.
So another census here, anyone else care, comment on that?
Can we just make a motion to throw the 100,000 into the train station and see what the vote is? I make the motion, if I can do it, to throw the 100,000 into the train station. Do you have a second?
Wait a minute.
That's actually not a bad idea because if we don't spend that 100,000, it's, it's not going to be there, and the lights won't be ready in time, so it's probably best.
Okay.
I got a question, can you do that?
Wait. Question, question, could we actually, Mr. Kneipp has a valid question, could we legally do that?
Is that a legal move of funds?
A tourism fund? To throw it into the train station?
It's already in the budget for this current area. We just didn't know what was going to.
No, I mean, for the.
But take the 100,000 dollars and put it towards the train station, could we legally do that?
Ornamental lighting, the train station lighting.
Well, that has to do with last year's budget?
No, this year.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that, and, yeah.
Lighting is lighting.
And we're talking about moving it to the train station though.
If I move the, the Christmas tree, would it make a difference? It's still a Christmas tree. It's lights, it's lights. It makes no difference where we put them.
Well, there is a restriction on what you can do at tourism funds.
Right. Well, the train station, the whole idea is to bring in tourism. How do they get here? They get here by train from Chicago.
They check into.
Just want to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing t's.
And I, Mr. Kneipp, I agree with you 100%, I want to make sure we could do it too, no doubt about it. But I'm waiting for staff to, I'll tell you one thing, Maggie, I don't think we're going to get through all these accounts, it's already 1110, okay? I think the problem is, I think census is, we finish this tourism fund and we call it the night, and we come back and revisit, because I'll tell you one thing, I think a lot of people are getting really tired up here tonight, and we need to make some other tough decisions down the road. So let's, if that's right, let's get through the tourism fund and then come back.
That's fine, and that will be the end of the special revenue funds, it's a good spot to stop.
Right.
May I make a suggestion about this ornamental lighting?
Yes.
Let the staff check to see if we can, we can find any legal reason why we couldn't use it for the platform lighting, because you know, it's tied in with that IMF money?
Right.
Okay? And if we can, then we'll just come back to you. I mean, the expenditure will be there, it's either going to be spent in the tourism fund, we'll pay for the lighting right in the tourism fund, or we. we'll pay for the lighting right in the Tourism Fund, or we move 100 into commuter parking lot and buy the lighting that way. It's still 100,000, okay?
All right.
So we'll just find out what the cleanest way is to do that. The other two things that, that I guess probably need a little discussion are the seasonal decorations and.
Right, to hire a professional services.
We're going to, we're going to hire out a professional decoration company, and we're, we've actually got two proposals right now, and we're reviewing those.
Okay. Seasonal decorations, anyone care comment, leave it? Okay. The museum?
Typically, the Historical Society.
Right.
Asked for 5,000 this year, they've upped it to 6.
Basically, they use their, the 5,000, the way I understand it, for their special events. I say we leave them at 5 and see what the carnival does. If we make money on the carnival, we can give them the extra thousand then, no?
Okay, Christine?
People in Wooddale go to these events. I've, I've gone to a few of them, it's like, you can't even get a seat in some of the things that they do. They're doing like quality programs that people go to, people probably, more people probably go to their events than our tree lighting. I'm serious, if you go there, people go there, and, and then they have that flea market, I mean, there are some real things that the community participates in. So to argue over 1,000 dollars, let's show our support for this organization that people actually go to, and let's do the 6.
Okay. Oh. Brad?
Kind of to piggyback on Alderman Winger's comment there, the Historical Society did send us a letter thanking us for our gratitude this year, and did outline some of the numbers that they received at their programs. If you'd like, I can provide that, a copy of that letter to you, so you can see what sort of things they were doing with the funds that we gave them.
Let's put that in the package. Anything else? Okay.
One more fund, the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. There's nothing to it.
It's nothing to it.
As you know, we, we collect forfeited drug money occasionally, not on any kind of schedule, we never really know when that's going to be dispersed to the city, and the city pays for the K-9 unit and some police equipment where possible. This particular year, all we have is K-9 expenses, and we have 2,000 dollars of other equipment. The fund usually has anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000 dollars, and it depends, you know, when those forfeiture monies come. And the chief chooses particular equipment that has to do with drug enforcement, that's the, that's the rule for this type of money. It's not a major, major deal at all.
We can't do anything with that fund, so.
No, not really, but it's, it's another special revenue fund. Okay, so then at the next meeting, we'll take up all the Capital Projects Fund, which is the regular Capital Projects Equipment Replacement, Information Technology, Land Acquisition Fund, and Economic Development Fund, okay?
Yes, I.
And then we'll be at the end, pretty much.
Well, we hope, and then we'll go back and visit. Any more questions, and we'll, we'll hash it out.
Yeah, we have two meetings in March, and then, obviously, you could always add a third meeting in March if you wanted to, I don't know that it would be necessary. And then we need to have the, if we have a budget meeting in April, it's got to be early, because we have to have the, the bound budget copy available for public inspection before the council passes the budget.
It's usually 10 days before it passes.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's our timeframe. So if we need to have an extra meeting, it would have to be towards the end of March. But if that's necessary to get through all this, that's possible.
You know, I, I think the way we're going now, I, I think we'll be pretty much on time with it. I mean, I think we'll have enough time to fine tune. I don't think we would have to add an extra meeting, but there's always that chance, but I don't think we would be necessary. Okay, I make a motion adjourned. All in favor? Motion carries.